Yeah, it took me a second.
Great.
Yeah, heavy.
What movie?
Two. What's it?
Straw.
Straw.
It's on Netflix.
I've never heard of it either.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It's very good, but it's heavy. You need to watch something light afterwards.
Yeah, yeah. Reality check.
Yeah, failure of systems. Do you want to go by Apple time or do you want to go by township time?
Whatever.
The quickest.
By Taylor time?
Apple time, the quickest.
Well, I know what her answer is going to be.
Six.
Yeah.
Right on the button, right now.
All right, I just don't want someone to come in and say, "Look, you started early." It could happen. Get rid of these important notes? Are you going to record us, too?
No, I just forgot to do the one for the beginning.
Those are from my favorite.
No.
From Housefield, that we're trying to get.
Okay, good.
Good to go? Taylor? All right, welcome. We're going to start the meeting, the Bath Township Board of Trustees Meeting for Monday, July 7th. We'll start with a roll call.
Mr. Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Ms. Haggerman, here. Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Kotkey?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Here.
And absent is Clerk Butler Chalender.
We're glad to have the deputy clerk sitting in. Thank you. Item two on the agenda is civic reflection. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance and follow up with a moment of silence. So please stand if you are able to join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now a moment of silence. Thank you. I know in my thoughts tonight, and I'm sure many of us are the folks in Texas who are going through awful flooding and just horrible stories every night on the news, sending them some positive vibes that I know they need. Item three on our agenda is approval of the agenda. And if you're in the audience and you'd like a copy, I believe there's copies at the lectern if you want to follow along. I did not hear any changes today.
Nope.
No? Anybody want to move that forward, then?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda I have submitted.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussions, questions? Hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of approval of the agenda as presented tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've got an agenda. Item four on the agenda is disclosure of conflicts of interest. Does anyone have a conflict they would like to disclose tonight? All right, we're all conflict-free. Item five is public statement one. This is an opportunity for those who are visiting us here in person to make a statement to the board up to three minutes, but is designated for statements only concerning tonight's agenda. If you want to comment on things that are not on the agenda, there is a second opportunity at the end of the meeting with an additional three minutes that you can talk about anything under the sun. If you have something you'd like to say to the board for the agenda for our first public statement, please step up to the lectern, introduce yourself, and have at it. All right. Last chance. All right. Usually I start to close it down and someone says, "Actually, I'm going to stand up and I've got something to say." All right. Item six is items from county, state, federal, and other agencies. I know we have our chief here to talk to us about a promotion. Chief, you want to take to the lectern?
Good evening, everyone. It is my honor today to officially recognize the promotion of Sergeant Chris Hamilton to the rank of lieutenant here at the Bath Township Police Department. Chris has been with us since 2006. He has served as a sergeant since 2018. Over the years, he's consistently demonstrated the kind of leadership we value most. Humble, supportive, and service-oriented. He's known for asking, "What do you need?" A simple phrase that speaks volumes about his commitment to his fellow officers and to this department. Beyond his leadership on shift, Chris plays a vital role in our officer development. He leads our department use-of-force training, teaches defensive tactics at the police academy. On his own time, teaches Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu to help area officers build the confidence and skills they need in the field today. His dedication to tactical readiness, especially as commander of the county special operations team, directly strengthens our department and the broader law enforcement community. And these are only a small examples of the many extra duties Chris has taken on throughout his career. This is more than a well-earned promotion. It's a move that secures leadership continuity, sharpens our department's capabilities, and sets a strong example for the next generation of leaders. Chris? Congratulations. Know you do good. Versus lovely bride will give you the honors. Congratulations Lieutenant Hamilton.
Chief, will you stay there for a moment?
Yes, sir.
No, no, I'm sorry. Yes. Will you, just for the folks that don't have a law enforcement background, tell us what the lieutenant does?
Sure. Basically, he's going to be my right-hand man. He's going to be in charge of the day-to-day operations in the department. He's also going to help set goals for the department and lead our department in training. And he's also going to be the head of internal investigations.
Great. Thank you.
It's a very important position.
Couldn't have chose a better guy. Every time he's been called on me, he's been really great to deal with.
Me, too.
Other items? Were you expecting anybody else?
I'm not, no, thank you.
I don't see anybody else, so we'll keep a track in here. Number seven on the agenda is the consent agenda. Our law enforcement friends can leave if you'd like to. In the consent agenda, there's minutes from several committees. Would someone like to move that forward? Or is there anything that anyone would like to pull out of that?
I make the motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
The consent agenda?
Yes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. On the consent agenda, because it's a consent agenda, we don't have discussion, so we'll move right to a roll call vote.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Kotkey?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Ms. Haggerman?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. That brings us to the approval of board meeting minutes. Item eight on the agenda from June 16th. Any comments, thoughts on the...
I have a comment.
Yes, great.
On the, it looks like page three, under Township Flag Policy, says, "Motion by trustee Kotkey to approve the Township Flag Policy that was included in the board packet as written." We did not have an opportunity to vote on that, so...
Well, nobody seconded it.
Hold on, hold on.
I made the motion and I was, and I had the wrong paper here, and you interrupted me, and then she immediately started. So I never had an opportunity to finish the motion to even take a vote on it or to see if there was a second on it.
So you want that removed?
I would like to redo it and retake the vote that was never taken.
Ray, where are you at again?
Page sixteen.
I'm on Township Flag Policy.
How about six?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay, thank you.
Fifteen, good.
Fifteen, the blue.
In the packet, six.
Got it.
If, you know, we can always...
Yeah, I don't know that you articulated a full motion.
Well, I was going to say, if you look at the recording, I was interrupted and I did not get to finish the motion. And then Ms. Kellerman immediately made her motion. And then it was quickly approved, I mean, seconded, and there was a vote. But anyway, I, I guess I should have made a motion of it at the time, but I was kind of not happy that I was cut off and not able to make that motion to come to fruition, to be allowed to have a second and to be allowed to have a vote.
And I privately told you that was on me, and I apologize for that.
I understand, but I just, you know, there's got to be a way to rectify it.
Well, speaking specifically about the minutes, would you like it to be depicted in some other way about what actually happened?
Sure. I would like to say that I was interrupted mid-motion and was unable to verbalize my complete motion on that flag policy as it was included in our board packet.
All right. So are you putting forward a motion to approve the minutes with that amendment?
Yeah, I could do that. I will put forth a motion.
I'm not asking you to, I'm asking if that's what you're arguing.
Well, I don't know of any other way, you know, any other resolution, if you will. So I guess I'm new at this. I don't know if, what could...
In the minutes, Brenda can change it.
Yeah.
And you can always bring the flag policy back for a vote at another meeting.
They, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
I mean, I wanted to know if the door was shut.
Beauty and chaos of township government. We can keep voting on things over and over and over again.
Never been here before.
But in terms of the minutes, so your motion is to approve...
Approve them as amended.
Change it.
Amendment that you have verbally articulated.
I did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Discussion, comments?
Yeah, would you explain that again?
What transpired?
Yeah.
I commenced to make a motion on approving the flag policy that was written and handed out in our packet. And...
Which one?
Which one?
There was more than one.
There was, there was an amended one that came out that Ryan handed out later. And it was, I believe that was just an elucidation and articulation of the specifics so that you better, we better understood it. And so my motion was to make, to approve it as written and as handed out to us. And I got interrupted in the middle there because I had the wrong paper in my hand, and I couldn't, I agree with that, but...
Yeah, but what do you want put in the minutes?
What did you put in the minutes?
What do you want put in the minutes?
To not approve this.
I believe we already did say that.
I'm just asking you to repeat it so I can understand what you're saying.
I want...
That it was interrupted mid-motion and couldn't complete the second.
And it never came to...
Couldn't complete the motion.
So wasn't the motion done? Couldn't complete the motion.
Yeah. So it wasn't that no one supported it? I think that's, that's unfair.
So it's, you know, it was just in limbo.
Okay. I'm just, I'm also taking...
Can I use that word? No.
It's because I will need to help Brenda in people as well.
Oh, I understand. I just, you know, I didn't know that the procedure at the last meeting, so I didn't want to step on anybody's toes, but...
No, he's telling me that that's completely correct.
Yeah, I think just amending it maybe indicate discussion by trustee Kotkey related to a flag policy that was incomplete prior to the subsequent motion being made would remedy the concerns as to whether or not there was. It was not a motion made with the vote taken.
Is that sufficient for you, Ray?
Certainly. Yep. Does that satisfy your...
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions or thoughts on that change? Or other changes to the minutes or a motion to move, well, no, we have a motion.
You have a motion and a second.
As amended.
Other concerns, questions on?
Who was the second? Thank you.
All right, hearing nothing else, the motion on the floor is to approve the minutes with the amendment articulated by trustee Kotkey through the lips of our attorney.
Still sounds weird to hear that trustee Kotkey thinks.
That is the motion, and we will take a voice vote on this. So all those in favor of approving the minutes of the Board of Trustees Meeting of June 16th with changes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. That brings us to item nine, approval of the vouchers. Would anyone like to move the vouchers forward tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as submitted.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about the vouchers? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Mr. Kotkey?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Ms. Haggerman?
Yes.
All over the place, I'd say.
I like to keep you on your toes.
You do keep us on our toes. That brings us to the treasures report. We won't have a treasures report until next meeting. We'll hear how our investments are going, crossing our fingers for good news.
Ah, no, rates are going down.
Don't bury the lead for your report. Let us stream for another two weeks.
Sell, sell.
Item 11 is committee appointments. We have none. Item 12 is township committee reports. We have none. That brings us to item 13, unfinished business, large A, which is items for introduction and discussion. Small a is Webster Road construction update by the superintendent. By the deputy superintendent.
Do you have to show your badge?
Chief, can I get a badge? Yes, so we are officially in phase four of the project, which is very exciting. We're in the home stretch.
Four of four?
Four of four, yes. So as you may have noticed coming in today, now Webster Road from Drumheller to I-69 is closed. There is still access for those that live in Somerset Apartments and those that need to access Food Court Drive, whether that be for a food drive or if you're volunteering or working there. There is access available to them so they can enter from the north end of the construction zone. So from Drumheller going south, they can access there and then exit the same way that they came. They may have to wait for some trucks to move, things like that, but it shouldn't be a super long wait. Emergency Services still has access through the work zone as well as the westbound ramps. Part of the closure is that the westbound ramps are closed since there will be work done on the road outside of them, but also on the approach to them. So some of that will be replaced as well. And then Phase Three is now open. Drove on it this morning, it's very nice. There will still be some work that's done on the shoulders, so there may be some brief lane closures, things of that nature. And then once the whole part of Webster Road is done, then they will do the finishing layer. So that will bring, we've had that question a couple of times, that will bring the asphalt back up to your driveway, to the curb and gutter, so you won't have the giant bump that is occurring currently that I was met with at the township driveway this morning. Yeah, so that is about it. I did miss, the posted detour is Drumheller Road to Nichols Road to Park Lake Road. And then if you are trying to get onto westbound I-69, you can follow that same detour and then take Coleman and go to West Saginaw to get onto the highway. Or if it was easier for you, you could take Clark Road and then get on into it. So those are the options for that as well. Any questions?
So the access to the highway is closed, and the traffic through there should only be traffic that's going to Somerset and the food bank.
Correct. So you can still use the eastbound ramps. Those are still open since they're on the other side of the bridge, but the westbound ones are the ones that are closed.
You already answered my question.
Okay, great.
I would like to request the planner come to the lectern and give an update on driveways that are comprised of asphalt so that he can inform residents that that work will be completed as well.
Yeah, as the deputy superintendent was just saying, there is a finishing workforce that will go along when the entire corridor is complete with kind of the substrate of the project. When that finishing workforce is being installed, that's the opportune time for the road commission to go around and fix up all these little driveways, like the entry to SPAGS, entry to Dollar General, residents that had their asphalt cut open so the sidewalk could go through. That's the opportune time to do that because the Reith Riley finishing asphalt crew is out here and it's the most economical, sustainable, and efficient way to do all of that instead of piecemealing it as we go. So if anybody's wondering, that's what's going on with that.
And if people have questions, they can call here.
They, of course, can call here. The project, though, is being managed by the road commission, so if they want a specific date and time of when my asphalt is going to be done, road commission staff is best suited to answer that question.
Should they post these questions on Facebook?
You can always do, I would hesitate to tell somebody what to do on their personal Facebook, but...
Is that the best way to get an answer, Myles, is what I'm asking?
Getting an answer is to go to the people managing the project, which in this case is the Flank County Road Commission staff.
Thank you.
Miles, while you're up here, can you talk about the Slate Road sidewalks and the status of those?
The size of it, the status.
The Slate Road sidewalks and the status.
Yeah, so the sidewalk work on Slate Road is wrapping up now. We, I mentioned, I think, in passing at one of the meetings, there was a pole that was in the way. The pole has been moved out of the way, which allowed us to pour concrete. The sidewalks are largely done. There's some finishing work when it comes to reseeding and getting the grade of the earthwork correct. But other than that, the sidewalks are walkable, they're in place, I think they look nice. So, yeah, it's been going great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Myles. I did send you an email about a concern I had going east on Clark. Did you see that?
I did. I will ask that the road commissions repaint all the arrows so that it is clear whether you're going straight or turning at the four corners.
Even if like a sign temporarily, I think? Because if you're from Bath, you know that that left lane is a turn lane.
Yeah.
If you're not, there's no way to tell, and people just go straight.
I've encountered that as well. So, yes, we will try to rectify that.
After the second time almost getting hit, I was like, "Well, to be fair, there's actually no markings here to tell anybody those things."
Correct, okay.
Great, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Speaking of updates, it is time for your quarterly projects update.
It is. So I did hand out a hard copy to each of you, and I will go through that briefly. If you have any questions or something you are wondering about is not on here, please let me know. The audit for 2024 is now complete and has been submitted with the assistance of our treasurer to the state of Michigan with the related reports. We are working with Siegfried Crandall on scheduling a presentation to the Board of Trustees, excuse me, and we hope to have that scheduled really soon. And then your role in that will be to accept and place on file that audit, so that will occur at the meeting that Siegfried Crandall presents that to us.
We don't need to accept it before it goes to the state?
No, you'll accept it at the time it's presented to you.
Has to be submitted to the state of Michigan by June 30th.
So it's already been, the deadline has passed us, so it was submitted on the 30th or prior to the 30th.
So our approval is just...
You're accepting it.
I hate to ruin the plot, but it was a very good audit, and it was unmodified and clean. So we are, we are doing well.
No whiteout on it, then?
No. The AGS contract for the building department, we are still working through that with AGS, setting some expectations and doing some things that we have previously not done before with them to ensure that they are meeting our expectations and that we can work together in a productive manner, so...
But we're sticking with them?
At this time, we have not chosen to move away from them. I will bring that to this board for consideration, and we can have that discussion at that time.
Okay.
The Board of Trustees is, of course, has embarked on strategic planning and an assessment of the committees. The meetings that have been held to date have gone well. There has been good participation. The department heads completed their part last week, and it was very positive, and I think it was very helpful for Larry. He thinks, it won't put words in his mouth, but he seems to think that we operate well and very productively and positively. So I hope that that will be reflected in his report. Contracts, of course, we have two. In addition to negotiating MERS, we have the...
Could I, I'm sorry?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Could I just add to the strategic plan that we have the stakeholder...
Yes.
Meeting on Thursday?
On Thursday. I will be present at that, and the supervisor put together that list, and people have already RSVP'd.
Yeah, it seems like a good list. That is not for board members. I've been asked to share that.
Are stakeholders like community members that have businesses? Is that...
Yeah, businesses, church leaders, civic leaders.
The school, yeah.
Yeah, the school, although they were here. A lot of those folks that I would have put on that list were at the kickoff one. I did think of the Legion afterwards.
We can...
I know it's a little late, but...
We can extend it on...
I drove by and thought...
An invitation. We can do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine. Of course, the police department road patrol union contract is effective through the end of the year as well as the supervisory union contract. And I'm sure as soon as we get through MERS and an agreement on that, we will be moving forward with those contracts as well. An item that's been hanging out there is a cell tower lease agreement. They were out doing some work last week, and it allows me a chance to go ahead and count the number of units that are on there and make sure that we're being reimbursed for all of the equipment that's hanging. That actually is a good thing and will give me time to negotiate that and bring that back to this board for their approval. Cemeteries. Administration and staff are reviewing the rules, the regulations, and then the planner has been reviewing the fees and has, I believe, proposed some fees to the clerk at this time or the clerk's office. Those will come to you as well. Hiring, as tonight you were introduced to the police lieutenant, a police sergeant position will either be filled internally or could be put out for an external placement. That is undetermined at this time, and so we will wait on that. The fire chief hiring is in process. The hiring committee interviewed three candidates. Unfortunately, the top candidate declined our offer, so the search continues, and we are trying to regroup on that and figure out what's next in that realm. So that was disappointing, but I would rather know before someone gets here that it's not the right position for them, so... IT. The Township Campus Wi-Fi equipment has been upgraded. That is complete. To my knowledge, we are not experiencing any issues with dropping, especially these board meetings as they're being livestreamed, so that is good news. The recreation desk registration online payment system that's been facilitated by the deputy superintendent is now active, up and running, and I actually used it today to pay for a sponsorship for Bath Fest, so I can assure you that it was a relatively quick and painless process. I think the longest I waited was for my account to be approved, which Taylor was easily able to do, so that is exciting now. And the new website, of course, I hope you've had a chance to see, is up and live. If you see anything that concerns you or you have questions, please let the deputy superintendent know, but it looks fabulous and seems to be well-received by those that are using it. Even our staff uses it throughout the day in the front office, and they seem to like it as well, so...
Heard really good feedback.
Yes, yes. Much more professional and, which is not surprising. I designed the last one, so it was time for it to go away.
Yeah, but that was like 1859.
Correct. Correct. You're correct. Might have been fifty-eight or fifty-seven, but correct. Uh, MERS is ongoing. Uh, we are currently pursuing some fixes for the non-union DC plan. Uh, as some of you might not know, uh, in implementing the plan over the last couple of weeks, we found that if we did not set a mandatory contribution rate for the employees, all of their contributions were post-tax. That was a painful lesson to learn and so, um, the finance committee met briefly tonight and, uh, I think we have rectified that information. We can now go back to MERS and request those documents. Those will come to you at your next board meeting. Most likely we'll be asking you for immediate action, uh, that evening because it, uh, any further delay delays the employees from being able to participate. They are getting the township's contribution, but of course they're paying more in social security and other taxes, uh, and not able to invest their money here in the township. Um, personally, they can post tax, but, um, so it's kind of holding everybody up. So, uh, it's the things we learn as we move through the process. Uh, we are still negotiating with the unions. Uh, we received an offer back that, uh, legal counsel and I will be discussing this week and hopefully able to either counteroffer or move forward with bringing that to the board. So please stay tuned for that. The operational assessment, as you know, you were invited to the fire department assessment. That is complete. To my knowledge, they have not asked for any additional documents and we will be waiting for a report from our consultants, which we hope to have in August. They told us at the latest, so we will stay tuned for that.
I thought that conversation was really good.
It was very productive. It was very productive. They thought so as well. They were-
Board members and talk about the future.
They were happy with the feedback they received from the board. Uh, so thank you very much. Uh, I have identified with the help of those consultants, uh, some consultants that would be interested in doing the police department assessment. Same thing with them, um, and we will pursue some RFPs on that process and I'll be speaking with the chief of police about that in the coming weeks. Uh, Park Lake, the township continues to work with PLM lake management. You probably have seen some signs around the, the lake at the public areas, like the boat launch and the beach, where they are treating for, uh, the recommended, uh, noxious weeds, um, at the lake. And then I think they are also working with the homeowners if they chose to have any, um, applications done at their homes. They pay separately for that. And the township also continues to work with Goosebusters on the mitigation of geese, which I think is successful. Trustee Kotkey shared, uh, some lake testing numbers with me. Seems to be going well. Um, no longer are we having to shut the beach, um, which is very important and it seems to be well-used, which makes me happy. So.
It's full every single day.
It's full. Yes, it is and I like that. Uh, the personnel policy, uh, has been updated by legal with recent employment changes. Um, the, uh, S- ASLA?
ESTA.
ESTA, thank you. Uh, changed, uh, I, I always have the wrong acronym. Uh, made some changes to, um, some of the hours in the reporting. Um, so we have worked with law, legal to fix those and we have, um, we have reviewed it, uh, and are trying to determine the next steps. And I think that would be to bring it to the board and it's a matter of, uh, all at once because it is a lengthy document or if we should bring it in pieces. So I'll be working with the supervisor on that to have a discussion on how to best bring that to you for your understanding and review. Uh, the planning department is underway with, with, um, Giffel Webster on the comprehensive plan. Some of that is intersected with our strategic planning, so the community is already, um, making constructive criticism to that process. Uh, Webster Road, uh, I didn't update this as much. Um, I had a conversation with, uh, the planner this afternoon. It looks like we have some numbers for, uh, the, our part of the process at this time. Um, it is-
Chandler Road, right?
Chandler, oh, I'm sorry. Did I say Webster? Um, Chandler Road, I'm so sorry. Uh, in twenty twenty-seven, we need to, at this time, determine if we want the sewer to be relocated into the road, which I think is very important, uh, for many reasons. Um, and that's approximately two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. I think it's important to do that at this time, so I will, um, include that cost into our planning. The treasurer and I will, uh, meet together to discuss that as well as, uh, work with, uh, Baker Tilly to see, uh, if with cash on hand or if we need to bond, um, we will start working through some of those options that can be brought to the board for your consideration. Uh, but I think we're getting closer to a number that we can all live with. Um, but we have a meeting this Thursday, so more to come. Uh, the recreation department is doing really well. Uh, I've been pleased with James and his performance. Um, he is currently working on summer and fall programming, which includes outdoor movies, flag football and Bath Fest. The senior center, he is currently scheduling program with community partners, including MSU Extension, the library, Tri-County Office on Aging and the MSU Bird Observatory. And the farmer's market is, uh, underway and will continue through the end of October. So everything is in full swing right now.
Are you leading the trip to the bird observatory?
I should. I do love birds. Thank you. Um, general maintenance and repair is underway in the township brush spray, but, excuse me, brush spray, overband, crack fill and mowing gravel shoulders. Some of that occurred, um, during the Webster Road project. There was mowing, say on like nickel, right there on Nichols where it intercepted, um, Drumheller.
Yeah, what I mentioned.
Yep, the one you mentioned to us, um, and keeping them safe for people to navigate the detours of the summer. So that is in full swing as well. And then our sewer master planning, uh, continues, uh, with Prime and Newhoff of our sewer infrastructure. And this work includes applying for state revolving funds, which we did not qualify for the, in this year. Uh, but we will continue to apply for those funds. Uh, in the meantime, they will go on the CIP as non-discretionary so that you may see what is needed to bring our sewers up, uh, in infrastructure repair and maintenance as well as projects that just need to be done, such as the, um, the work that we would have done next door here on Drumheller had, uh, Norm Fastener, uh, came to town. It was that, um, system where it held on to the sewage and then let it go at a certain amount of time, uh, to get the optimum flow towards to it. Uh, and again, we will continue to work with Baker Tilly, uh, on what we can do to fund what is needed in our township. Any questions, please?
Um, what, is there any update on conversations between the township and the management at Oak Island regarding access to the Park Lake Trail?
Uh, I had sent a letter and I had heard nothing back. I am, think I'm at a point, um, past the point, I should send a certified letter so that we can make contact because I have not heard anything back. Go ahead.
Just, uh, on that, um, did you get the update about who to send it to? I rem-
Yes.
I, I had talked to Ryan about that.
Yes, yeah, I did.
Cause it was supposed to go to some executive vice president of, you know.
Correct.
So.
And I think prior to that, I had just sent it via just regular mail and I think I need to send it. So I'm getting a signature back to ensure that I'm reaching the right person or at least-
Southfield, is it?
A person, correct. Yeah.
Good, thank you. Oh, sorry, I didn't ask the question.
We'll come back to you.
The, uh, I understood at the time that we had put in for the money or the state had, uh, county had put in for the money on the sewer, um, uh, Chandler Road that we talked about last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
That maybe they would do a little less on the road and still do our sewer. Is that po- a possibility?
So we agreed to all go back to our cost and to look at what, uh, we could give and take. And we will be coming together, I think, with those numbers at the next meeting. Uh, but we had a meeting where we skipped, uh, a, a month, I think. Um, and so this is the first meeting. We're coming back all together, so I think we'll figure that out this week when we're together.
Okay. If I may, that, we did get, uh, a grant for ten million.
Correct.
And so it's, the cost overrun is eating that up is what's happening. That's why the-
It was less than, it was less than what we had asked for.
I think we asked for thirteen, didn't we?
It was actually, I think it was fourteen. Um, so we were four million short. So it, um, kind of ate into the entirety of the project, not just the sewer, but the road, the drain, uh, and the, and the non-motorized portion of it. Um, so we're, we're all having to rework.
Oh, yeah, and you had mentioned something about, uh, bonding for the-
It's possible.
Is it possible that we could go with the con- or with the project as it was originally, can, the, the original concept and bond for that?
Um, it is possible. Um, we'll have to make sure that that works with all the parties. Um, and it includes some work that, um, I think we have, uh, it's lift station work that I think we were looking to do long-term, but we may not. If we don't need to do that now, it, it may be better to wait. So we will carefully weigh all those options and make sure what we're doing is, is at the best cost. I mean, cause we also know that the longer we wait, the more expensive things get.
That's, that's why I was thinking that.
We're gonna, we're gonna weigh all of it and Prime and Newhoff, as well as the sewer authority, SCUMA, Brad Gersky will be on hand. We'll consult with all of our people to make sure we're, we're doing the best project possible.
I, I, the reason, that was the exact reason I asked it because it never gets cheaper.
It never does. No, you're correct. You're correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, the road commission is the recipient of the funds?
Correct. All of the funds. Yep, they're the, they're the manager of that project.
And that doesn't get into it at all?
Mm-mm.
That's a good thing. I know that we had on our list an additional emergency siren and I know there was problems getting land.
Mm-hmm.
Have we made any progress with that?
I would like to tell you that we had, but we have not, um, since the assistant fire chief, Kevin Douglas, left. Uh, and we, uh, have been encountering some issues in the fire department. That has not been our priority, but we can certainly swing around and revisit that again.
I did get another email from a resident who didn't hear it because, and they just happened to be in that northeast corner that we've been talking about, uh, on one of the bad storms that recently happened.
Okay. I do think, maybe not with this resident, but I do think there's a common misconception that people think they're supposed to be able to hear them in their homes, which they are not. Um, and so I would just offer again, I, I take what you're offering me very seriously and we will look into it for the upcoming budget for twenty twenty-six. Um, but I will remind folks that if you are in your home, you are close to your radios, phones, uh, TVs and that, that is your emergency system at that point. But if you are outside and, and they very well could have been outside and not heard a siren, so.
Yeah, I don't know the details.
Those are for outdoor though, but I will just reiterate that.
I just know in my home, I hear it loud and clear. Cause I am very close to it.
Also, when I'm in my home, I can hear it loud and clear, but that is a common misconception for people.
I can't hear it outside.
Oh, okay.
I, you know, ironically, I was looking through, uh, archived meeting minutes
Mm-hmm.
and it was like in the nineties, I see that we brought that up once and once or twice to try to get, uh, some new ones. Apparently it didn't go anywhere.
Yeah.
They're very expensive.
They are expensive. Um, I think the, the issue at this time for us is, is finding something in the right of way. Uh, and, yeah, that, that is, seems to be the hardest part. It's, it needs to be in a, a, a road right of way or some type of right of way space or property owned by the township and that is not an area where the township owns property. So it'll be working with, uh, a landowner or in the right of way in an optimal area that's chosen by the company for the location.
If I was a landowner, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want that big old horn going off in my yard. You just wanna get swept away by the tornado then?
Yeah.
Yeah. Which according to the deputy superintendent, we've had twenty.
I think, I think I said twenty-seven.
We've had twenty-seven.
In Michigan.
This year.
Like a record.
Yeah.
Record for this time, yeah.
Which pri- prior years had been sixteen or seventeen, I think, so huge increase.
Yeah.
Close to.
Police case.
Um, has the police department had any, had any luck filling the officer positions?
Uh, two were offered recently and unfortunately both of those positions were declined. Um, and I, and I'm unsure why. Um, because, uh, departments around us are also hiring. Um, they've gone to good departments. I won't say better departments because I think they would have, uh, been, done well here. But we are competing with surrounding communities for those same people. So unfortunately, we did not get the two that we tried to offer to.
Do we have a fully executed contract for ambulance yet?
Uh, it is my understanding that Eaton area or U of M has not signed it yet. Uh, and once that is completed, then the clerk and, uh, you will be presented with that agreement for signing. Uh, but we are at this time waiting on U of M and I think it's just, uh, the bureaucracy not for any reason of concern. It's just making its way through the proper channels.
They're lacking leadership at U of M right now.
Could be one of the things that's getting lost, uh, there then. So. Additional questions? Supervisor and I agree that it's good to have these, uh, at least quarterly updates with you all. Um, and we hope to move some things along. We've gotten stymied by some hiring things and some projects that are moving slowly. So we'll continue to, uh, press away. What I can tell you is that the things that are moving are moving well. Uh, and staff, uh, takes an active role in helping manage those projects such as Webster Road and, uh, I'm very pleased with the progress on what has moved forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you all feeling good about these reports? It's a good use of our time. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting it together. I know it takes time. That brings us to item thirteen, unfinished business, large B, items for action. First up is the letter of understanding between Bath Township Police Department and the Bath Township Police Road Patrol Union regarding the canine handler compensation amendment. Superintendent.
Uh, if there are questions, we are here to answer them. Um, I know the chief, uh, brought this up at the last meeting, but of course we are always here to answer questions. We would support this, uh, moving forward, but of course are here to hear your concerns or your questions.
No changes since you presented, since it was presented to us?
Since it was presented last time, it is, it is the one that is, um, up for, uh, approval by this board on page eighteen.
Yeah. All right, questions?
Is there enough money in there in our budget that we don't have to move any to help pay for that? Or do we have to move some money?
Um, if moving money, um, internally i- is, is fine, it's usually a journal entry. There should not have to be any, uh, budget amendments.
Okay.
Um, but if we need to, just to effectuate this, uh, by the end of the year, we'll do that, um, with a journal entry. But I do not foresee a budget amendment being needed.
Plus we're paying in kibble, so.
Kibble's a bitch.
It was already in the budget, yeah.
It was, so I don't see it being needing anything.
All right, anybody want to move this forward? We looking for a, uh, action for the, uh, uh, letter of understanding? If you so desire. I would like to make the motion to approve this and get it moving on.
Second.
We've got a motion to approve the letter of understanding with a second from Sherry.
Second.
Third from Al. Everyone's pro dog. Everyone wants to vote for the dog. Are there other questions or concerns to discuss before we move this to a vote?
I would make a comment that the dog handler's twenty-four seven. Every day of the week, every single day, he's working with that dog. So this is minimum.
That's it.
Other thoughts? All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Wasn't expecting that. Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Kotkey?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. That brings us to item thirteen BB, the resolution twenty twenty-five oh six to cap union employee contribution to pension through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, I sent you all an email this afternoon that my recommendation is that we do this month to month instead of three months out. I know there's another school of thought on the board that maybe we should do it two months out. Um, happy to hear what other folks think.
So I will offer, if you'd like me to start, um, I will offer that there are, uh, two pay dates in July, two in Au- three in August and two in September. Uh, based on those, each pay date costs the township five thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. So for the month of July would be ten thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-two cents. This is based on eighty-four hours a pay week. This is not based on overtime because I could not, um, uh, estimate that is different each payroll. So, uh, it, this is on, um, straight eighty-four hours for each officer. Um, for two months, for July and August, it would be twenty-six thousand two ninety-five eighty. So I don't know what your pleasure is. The resolution is written for one month for July, even though the P O L C asked for one month or longer. Uh, and I will note to you- Uh, and I will note to you that we have received, uh, a counteroffer back on the MERS from the P-O-L-C, and we'll, I'll be meeting with Lizzie to discuss that this week. Um, so I can't tell you if we are near, uh, having something to bring to the board, but I would offer that it's, uh, July seventh, and we do have an, a counteroffer back from them. So progress is, uh, occurring.
Was it not Lizzie's suggestion to do the three months? Am I remembering that incorrectly?
Um, I think the previous, uh, resolutions have covered three months, but I think maybe she thought we might come to an agreement sooner than three months.
Since the last meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. I just thought that's what I remembered from the last meeting.
So, just to put it easily.
Sure.
If we, if we, uh, take action to cap this union employee contribution, that would save the, uh, township the, the monies that you just quoted?
No, no, that's what it was going to cost you.
Okay, that's what it is going to cost.
It'll save the employees.
It will save the employees, yes.
Oh, well, okay.
So it is, is an expense to the township, and I'm indicating it could be more, based on overtime, but at this time, this calculation is made on a straight eighty-four hours per officer.
Do you have a recommendation?
Uh, I would support it for July. I don't know how you're going to take it. That is up to you, if you're gonna do it for July and August, or all three months, but I, I would support this for July.
I think if we keep it on a month-to-month basis, it incentivizes both us and the union to keep moving quicker to negotiation.
For a resolution?
I know there is, uh, work done behind the scenes that is made worse by doing it month-to-month. You wanna talk about that, Jen?
I just know when we submit forms to MERS, it takes them at least two weeks to get everything caught up. Um, the clerk and I talked, and she and I both think we should do at least two months, because that will give us July and August. So it's less paperwork on the back end for all of us in the office. Um, and due to the fact that they already have submitted something to them to negotiate, I think that they would have it done within the two months. I don't think going out three months is good for the township, but I think doing two months and having it go through August thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five, instead of the July thirty-first, cause we're already in July seventh. I mean, and it's hard to get, obviously, all of the union members to get together to vote after they go back and maybe make another offer, or bring us the offer, and then take it back. It, it's just, I think, at least two months.
I would offer to you that if you approved this tonight for July, I would be, it would be back on the twenty-first, and I'd be asking you for August in two weeks. So, even if you were to do it tonight for one month, it'll be back next, next, next meeting.
For August.
For August.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it takes to go month-to-month.
Correct.
So we'd vote every month.
Correct, I'm just making you all aware of that, what would occur.
Supervisor, what is your recommendation?
My recommendation is one month. I understand the two months, I'm, I wouldn't lose sleep over that. I don't think we should, I agree with Jen, go to three months. I think it, it buys all of us too much time to just let the issue sit.
Is the supervisor allowed to make a motion?
I am. I'm not going to. I'm happy to hear, uh, what any of you all want to do. The issue is approving the recommended resolution that's in the packet, which is one month. Or if you'd like to approve it for two months, you need to amend that to August thirty-first.
Yes, correct.
If you want it three months, it needs to be September thirtieth.
Well, what happens if the union comes, the union rep comes back and says, okay, well, we have an agreement, before the end of this month? So.
I think you could, uh, insert, uh, stipulation that if it were to be approved, but it, it's also gonna take one to two meetings at this board. So even if, let's say, Lizzie and I came to an agreement with them this week, um, it would be back in July, and it would be approved at the first meeting in August by this board. So you could include a stipulation that says if it's approved by this board, it would terminate. But that is up to you.
Cause it's expected that there would be structural changes to the plan that would make the rate change anyway.
Right.
So even, even if we don't put that stipulation in, it's unlikely that the rate would be the same that we've approved to cover.
Correct. Mm-hmm.
So something would have to be done, I guess is.
Well, if we approve this resolution to cap it until the end of July, um...
Two weeks, you vote me again.
Yeah, it won't, uh, cause a great deal of extra work for you, will it?
It does, because MERS is two weeks behind. So basically, they've already changed July first, they already changed our rate to the twenty-six, what is it? To twenty-six fifty-three?
Correct.
And so now, if we approve this tonight, they'll go back, change it back for July first, but August first, it's gonna change again, so we're gonna have to submit more paperwork. That's why I'm saying, do at least two months, cause it's less paperwork on the back end for us in the office, and for MERS, to have any misunderstandings of what we want to happen.
Do you get paid overtime?
No.
I go for one month.
Make a motion, and we can vote.
Uh, according to our minutes that we've got here, or our agenda, we're gonna be asking for the first week in July, uh, our, August off. So there's another meeting we're gonna miss.
That is correct.
Correct.
And so we'll do it at the end of August. So we probably should go the two weeks, for the two months, and, uh...
Well, what they're saying is for August, we'd have to do it in July.
How about we have a motion that we make it two months and see what the vote is?
To amend this resolution?
To two months.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Is that a motion you're putting forward?
I, the staff, please. I didn't hear you.
I make a motion that we amend this to two months.
August.
The August thirty-first.
August.
We revisit.
Second.
So your motion is just to amend the document, not to approve it with that amendment?
Or is this an action?
Approve it with the amendment, I'm sorry.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we all know what we're voting on. That's okay with you? All right, so the motion is to approve resolution twenty-two-five-oh-six with the last paragraph on page twenty of our, uh, packet, reading effective July one, twenty-twenty-five through August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Yes. Yep.
And Al seconded that?
Yes.
Okay, so I wanna make sure.
Other comments, questions, thoughts on that motion?
Being, being MERS takes so much time. Shouldn't we charge them a little back to, uh, cover for some of this it's costing us?
Wish we could.
You and I should come up with a new MERS. We could be rich.
That's accurate.
Roll call vote on that?
I think that's a no.
No, no, I don't, they, you know, they barely give us what they think we asked them for, so. I don't know that they'll give us more. You wanna do a roll call vote?
Sure.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Cockkey?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Sounded logical.
So you'll keep us on our toes as that approaches?
I will.
So should we think we need to go into September, it would be that second August meeting.
Correct.
We'd have to do something to. Great, thank you, board. That brings us to item fourteen, new business. Couple of items for introduction and discussion. First is ordinance fifty-eight-point-one to create standards for the approval of private roads and drives within planned unit developments.
Thanks for the introduction, uh, Supervisor. Um, I'll just say that, you know, one of my favorite things about the planning industry is, you know, taking a complex problem and trying to work through it, and, uh, you know, this is one of those. So, uh, the two items here, A, uh, little A and little B under new business, they're related to each other in many ways. Uh, they're separate on the agenda, cause one's obviously a regulatory ordinance that requires some action and a go, and one is a development that requires some action and a go. So, but, uh, the impetus for, uh, item A, the regulatory ordinance, which is, uh, amendment to chapter fifty-eight, uh, section within that governs private roads and drives, is a subsequent that is created out of a necessity because of how the approval and interpretation of the PUD language went and played out, uh, for item little B, the Gary Lane development at the planning commission. Uh, as of late, the planning commissions had much discussion about the standards within the PUD language, and what exactly that PUD language allows them to flex. Uh, just as kind of, um, some context to why we're talking about this, why this is coming forward tonight. Uh, PUD language as a planned unit development is common language that exists in, I, I mean, you guys know better than me, but every zoning ordinance I've ever reviewed. Um, why municipalities use planned unit development language? Is because often, projects will come before a municipality, and the rest of the zoning ordinance will do its best job it can to create standards that this is a vision of what we want in our community. However, there's a lot of nuances that come into play when you're trying to develop, you know, sidewalks, sewer, how the municipal infrastructure under the ground is. Maybe there's a wetland on-site, I, there's endless amounts of things I can't even think of that determine how a site has to be designed and how it come up. And those often run into conflict with the zoning ordinance itself. And so even though a community would say, like, we want a front yard setback of fifty feet in the zoning district, a site might incentivize a developer or a community, because of some aesthetic that they're going towards, might wanna deviate from that standard. The planned unit development language gives the planning commission the ability to deviate from many zoning standards, and in some communities, all zoning standards. And then furthermore, in some communities, it will give them ability to deviate from even some regulatory standards, um, that come into play. Uh, the interplay between zoning standards and regulatory standards, as far as Bath Township is concerned, that you might be most familiar with in our recent history, is the marijuana language. There's much crossover between the zoning, uh, sections of our ordinance and the regulatory sections of our ordinance, and that's done intentionally. This would be another scenario where we're creating an interplay between the regulatory ordinances, police pow ordinances are often referred to, and the zoning ordinance. The necessity for this interplay was created because of the view and the interpretation that the planning commission, uh, took when they voted for the little item being the Gary Lane development. And I think there is, I, I guess, as your planner, of course, I was there, I was present at the meeting, I think there is a case to be made there. I think there's a countercase to be made there as well. Because there is a case and a countercase to be made, it's always my, um, uh, it's always my intention to create clarity in the community where there's not, and I, it's also always my intention to keep us out of, you know, legal jeopardy, if you will. Um, so when that vote was taken, uh, after, uh, the day after, the, maybe two days after, uh, reached out to legal counsel and said, hey, a vote was taken, an interpretation was made, what do you, you know, what are you gonna think? What, what should we, what do you think about this interpretation? What do you think we can do to shore up the township's position and create clarity and keep us at, minimize our risk exposure? Um, and legal counsel helped me draft the ordinance before this body tonight. Um, I guess the most, the simplest way I could put what this language is doing, and we've utilized it in many other areas within the zoning ordinance, is you'd almost call it catch-all language. Uh, the sign ordinance would be, uh, the signage standards within the zoning ordinance would be another area where there's some catch-all language, where we list out pages and pages of standards, and then at the very end, we say, planning commission can deviate from this as their authority through the site plan review process. Now, I don't wanna say that doesn't mean, like, all rules are off, right? Because there's a couple qualifying factors that are rolling for, and, within the sign language, right? It has to be a project that comes before the planning commission. It has to be a part of the site plan review process. That way, you're saying, hey, we're creating flexibility, but it's flexibility with oversight. So now, going to this ordinance tonight, what this is doing is, it is shoring up the view that the planning commission took when they offered up a vote, creating flexibility within the PUD language, which, as we've spoken again, has great flexibility already, but they're flexing into the regulatory ordinance. Now, what it also does is it creates oversight, it says a couple things. One, this can only happen as a part of the planning commission's site review, uh, procedures, which would only happen in the commercial nature. But it doesn't mean, like, a resident can come and just, you know, up, there's flexibility in the private drive, looks like me and my family in our compound of twenty houses are about to have a private drive. That's not how that works. Uh, it also can only happen within one specific land use category. The land use category of a planned unit development. So not only is a planned unit development, you know, a, um, an abstract idea, within our zoning ordinance, it's a land use category. A, a planned unit development is a land use category in the same way a warehouse is a land use category, in the same way outdoor storage is a land use category. So it can only be one land use category, it can only happen under the site plan review process, and because that land use category is planned unit development, what that also allows is, planning unit developments are only allowed in Bath Township and almost every other municipality in zoning language I'm, I'm familiar with, as a land use permitted by special use permit. Because it's permitted by special use permit, that allows the planning commission to have wide latitude on the conditions they are a, able to assign that, uh, development as it's going through the approval process, and in Bath Township, it gives the board the ability to also have even further oversight. Because as, um, you guys might be painfully aware, all special use developments have to come before this body as well in Bath Township. Um, to that end, so that's kind of what we're talking about tonight. Uh, now, what does this do, if that hasn't been made clear? Is it allows the planning commission to at least recommend the flexibility for a developer developing a PUD to establish a portion, or the PUD in its entirety, to be serviced by private roads. Now, why, why, right? I think that's probably more to talk about, cause why would we, why would a planning, or a developer want to service their development by private roads? As you may or may not be familiar, this is a very, very common development tool, especially when it comes to some of those more denser suburban neighborhoods that are being developed. It essentially, the term that's used in industries, it helps projects pencil better, because if a project has to meet the standards of the city or the county road commission, depending on where it's developed, often those standards are higher. The process to review is burdensome, the inspections are burdensome, and it pushes the cost of the project to a point where the project no longer makes financial sense to engage in for the developer. That's why many of these projects, inside Bath, outside Bath, uh, the, uh, woodside golf course development that's going on in Dwyd Township right now will be served by private drives, it's seventy-something growing units. Uh, that project only pencils being served by private drives, and then, and within Dwyd's zoning language, uh, planned unit development can be served by private drives. Now, I understand this is all within the context that, at least in Bath Township, of, we just made private drives not a thing in two thousand sixteen, and we have had a tumultuous history with private drives. I think the important distinction for me with this one is, I never want, in zone, in zoning, I elect tools in my toolbox. When I'm trying to, uh, evaluate a project, or when I'm trying to advise a community on how they can grow sustainably, tool, tools in your toolbox are better than no tools. Taking private drives and saying, no more, seems like a no-tool option to me, but you also don't want bad tools either. And so I think that, in this metaphor, having the private drives allowed, but with all these qualifying factors, helps you mitigate having a bad tool in your toolbox, if that metaphor made any sense. Uh, sorry about that. So, and then finally, um, I'll get into it more in the next item, but the item that, you know, the short of it, the item that's coming next is a development for a unit, and it's served, supposedly served by a private drive. Private road.
How does this connect to the changes we made with private drives and roads earlier this year?
It will, it will really only connect with those changes in the sense that it's within the same section, chapter, within the ordinance. But those standards still hold. There's no flexibility for those standards as they are written. This only allows flexibility within the plan unit development language. Within the plan unit development language and those standards, there has one of the important caveats that we made because of the challenges that bad townships had in the past. You might remember the challenge being, in a hypothetical scenario that we've seen play out, there's ten residents served by a private drive, no maintenance, no maintenance agreement, no access agreement. Neighbors have all changed and moved since the road was made. And new neighbors are in, the road's in disrepair, it has to be repaired. Who's gonna pay for it? They have to organize amongst themselves. They've come to the township in the past and said, we can't pay for this, you guys have to pay for it. The township's in a weird position, we're not gonna pay for that, man, that's like you guys, it's ten houses, yours is your drive. So what this and the previous ordinance that were passed still upholds is there needs to be a governing body, an HOA, a condominium association, within a plan unit development. And, or a maintenance and access agreement in place, on file, with the register deed for every property served by these proposed and newly created private drives. That way, there is a legal mechanism to help people self cover.
Didn't it also define the number of houses that could be?
It did define the number of houses.
So with this caveat, would the planning commission be able to deviate from the number of houses?
Only within the context of a plan unit development. There are really two very different scales of projects. The number that before, there was large private roads and small private roads. Small private road is six households and under, and households slash parcels. And then the large private road was, the cap was thirteen. So obviously a plan unit development can be many more units than that. I think that's why it's important that the planning commission and the board have oversight. So if this was to be adopted, it would give the planning commission the ability to recommend projects and site plans, and the board the ability to have oversight on this.
But functionally, it could return us to large developments with private drives?
It could, in theory. If they were voted on in affirmative at that time.
Yeah, by the planning commission and us. Other questions, Keith?
When you say planned unit development, in my mind, I think subdivision, is that accurate?
Often used planning development, but just for context, it doesn't necessarily have to be. Like Taco Bell had to be a planned unit development. Because again, how our ordinance is worded, that Taco Bell would not be able to be in existence if we did not have planned unit development language, because it wasn't able to meet the other areas of our ordinance.
When I think about it, when I sort of subdivide that definition down to where we're talking about private drives and number of residences, then that would sort of bump Taco Bell out of that sort of application of it though, this application of it, right? So what, what would be in between these two? So we have private roads up, large private roads up to thirteen. And then the one we're gonna look at today is like sixty?
Forty.
Forty, sorry, did it used to be sixty, I think, I don't know, anyway. What's in between there?
Well, planned unit development can be any, I've seen in my time, now in bad township, which is generally speaking in planning, I've seen planning unit developments be ten households and I've seen planning unit developments be hundreds of households. Planning unit development is a very widely used zoning tool.
Okay.
So there is, there is nothing, but there would be nothing in between that. Planning unit development would largely cover the between area as well.
Okay, so basically anything over thirteen?
It could potentially be determined. But with how the, I would also add though, how the housing market is currently shaping up and without any large change in the market, typically these days have two types of builders. Builders are building quality over quantity, which means they're building homes at like the eight hundred thousand dollar price point. In which case they're likely not in need of the planned unit development language, because these are on one to five acres. And they're just buying up a farm and building along the roadside in deep lots. And then the other style of housing that's typically being developed right now is that quantity over quality. And I don't mean that in the sense that they're like bad homes to live in, I just mean they're at a lower price point, but there's many more of them. And that's the vein which PUD languages often use. So typically, if you're going to go down that path, I really think forty would be on the low end of what you would see in a PUD. Typically, it'd be somewhere in the sixty to ninety unit count, somewhere in there. More, more typically seem like, the one that's happening in Dwyer Township that I spoke about, that's your just classic PUD, seventy something units.
Right, so currently, if a developer wanted to put in something like?
At least in this area, obviously, it's region dependent.
If a developer wanted to say, buy up a bunch of farmland and put in something like similar to Hunter's Crossing that we already have?
Okay.
Would that be allowed with our current ordinance?
With our current ordinance, it would if they developed private roads. Or I'm sorry, public roads.
Public roads, okay.
But as I was kind of alluding to?
Okay.
The math doesn't make sense to do that. And you have to remember too, one thing that, just zooming out five thousand foot view, again, and I, I'll just say this again, I'm a public servant here in bad township. If there is a will in the community to go in a certain direction, obviously I can live with that and I'll sit fine at night. But I do feel like it's important for me to say like, hey, here's what we're seeing in the market and here, you know, here's full information to help you make a decision. Bad township doesn't exist in a vacuum, right? So like if you're a developer and you're trying to figure out like where you wanna do said project, these are all inputs that they're considering.
So in order to do public roads, how does that happen? The county road commission has to agree to it, right?
Yes, they have to agree to it. And that's what brings the barrier to entry to develop higher. And that translates to cost.
Because they don't agree to it, or?
Well, there can be, there can be standards where like even this development that we're talking about, they could, these roads are proposed to serve this development. The roads and how they're engineered themselves do in fact meet what your standard public road spec will be. They're curved, they're asphalt, they're sloped, they're actually wider. So the county road commission only requires a road at minimum be twenty, I wanna say twenty-four feet, don't quote me on that. But these are gonna be about thirty feet wide, is what we discussed.
Like an extra walking lane?
Yeah, and so you could actually argue these are gonna be built to a standard higher. The problem is that one point of access, I think we talked about here in the past, because they're going to be served off of Gary Lane, and Gary Lane only extends up to Anne Drive at one point of access, the road commission will never, would never approve these regardless of how well the road is engineered.
So that's why they're going out the back for another exit.
Well, even, so, we're gonna have, there is a condition for emergency access off of the private portion of Anne Drive. But again, even if that was becoming a full access, which is something myself and the developer entertained to the road commission when we were trying to understand their possible options and standards, the road commission still sees that as only one point of access. Because that portion, that north-south portion of Anne Drive is private. And again, this is a common tool. Private drive serving PUDs is a common, common tool for these reasons that you guys are encountering right here with this development.
And what are you asking us to do tonight?
Well, the recommendation, yeah, no, nothing tonight. Yeah, the recommendation is just to review this, we're intro, introducing this. But I guess the, the short of it is if the development, which I'll present here in a second, is something that you're interested in, then this ordinance would be something that you'd also be interested in.
Because one won't come without the other.
They can't, they have to go together.
Can we name it the Miles Ordinance? So that in twenty years when you're gone and everyone in this neighborhood is fighting, we can refer them to you?
I'm, I'm cool with that.
Great, we'll call it the Rabier Effect.
Kessler Ordinance might be more appropriate.
My Roth area to be retired by that point.
All right, any other questions about this particular piece before we move on to the actual PUD?
No, I, I think he explained it just about as well as he could to people that don't know anything about it.
Speak for yourself.
No, I was. And I was on the planning commission.
All right.
Thank you, Miles.
Let's move on to the next actual special use permit, please.
Yeah, so I think they might pull up an image for it on here, but if, if the trustees aren't familiar, this development would be north of I sixty-nine, kind of south of Anne Drive area of the township. It's got that access on the image you're seeing from Gary Lane. And that road kind of traveling north is serving the soccer fields. Another condition and element that is playing out with this development is working with the developer to shore up the access agreement for those soccer fields and writing, which currently is not. So there is a lot of, I guess you could argue benefit to, at, working with the developer that's willing to work with the township on how the soccer fields kind of is served. Full disclosure, obviously, for the developer, there is some benefit to them because that's helping them with their open space calculations, which is a part of the review that is taken into account when it comes to planning the developments, neighborhoods of the developments of this type. So it's kind of one of those situations where we can shore up how our soccer field functionally works, but the developer also can shore up their ability to meet our standards.
And am I correct in remembering that originally this was introduced as site condos?
It was originally.
Site condos, all bets are off, you can have as many units as you want in private road and it didn't fall under our ordinance, right?
There was.
For that specification?
So with site condos, how we are attempting to interpret this development was, site condos have things called access drives. They're not a public, just to make it even more fun and confusing. Access drives are not a private drive, they are not a public drive. There's two of them I believe that exist in the township. It's used within the site condo language. However, ultimately upon review, that helped cure some of our zoning standards, but it triggered other ones to come into play. It was ultimately, and the developer was given a number of options, including going back to the drawing board, obviously as an option. The developer ultimately chose the path of reclassifying and resubmitting their application as a plan unit development. So not at our request, just, you know, working with their own legal counsel and trying to figure out their best path to the board.
Where does the property touch the actual soccer field?
So you can kind of see that white space at the top. All of this is currently property owned by the developer. That white space at the top probably touches maybe the parking area of the soccer field. I don't think it touches the actual field itself.
I think currently parking occurs on their property, so.
Yes.
And what's the plan for that?
The plan for that is to get all this shored up in a random agreement of where people can park, where access is. And then even the developer has talked about, and this was a while back ago, I don't know if the current staff here from Faye Schultz even is aware of this, but Faye Schultz even wrote us an opinion, because the developer was interested in having this considered in their open space calculation, but then donating a portion of that land to the township where the park does, just to kind of shore it up and clear it up. And that's still their intention. And the opinion that came back is, you know, that's something that happens, it's common.
How will we know if that moves from intention to actuality?
Some of the conditions on this development state in. That agreements. That agreements. And access be provided. The why you need to review that.
I saw it here on one of these.
Yeah, all required public fees shall be established with the township prior to the creation. So we could get an easement from them giving us access, or they could take the greater step of, you know, donating. If that's a condition that this body would like added, that that land be donated and the easement doesn't satisfy, this body is concerned, that's something we can add.
Is that a legal?
Yeah.
Condition?
I think so, I don't know the legal opinion that I was just talking about. We can look at that when this comes back for the, for the board's consideration, I can go through that condition with you all.
Yeah, I'd love to explore that. I think that would be helpful, because that is such a used area of parking that should the landowner decide, they're not gonna do any of this, it would really jam up use of that park, and it's one of our most, most used populous parks. Maybe give me some heartburn medicine on the private road issue.
I get that. Yeah, other than that, I mean, as a development itself, it's a, a very common development that you would see in medium-esque density zoning districts. It's forty units, like I said, which is probably on the low end of developments like this. But for bad township, I mean, it's definitely a healthy amount of units. It will definitely add to the amount of housing stock in the township. Maybe one important point that is worth noting is a lot of the development that we've seen at least in my time here in bad township, this park taking place in the Hazard School District. This would be a development that would take place within the bad township school district. So obviously there's some implications there, you know, that are worth probably considering at least at the board level, not so much at the planning commission level. There's good open space, you know, in terms of development sustainability, I think this development really checks that box too. Within planning, you know, you've heard about these terms urban growth boundaries. When you're developing sustainably, you wanna create a density that makes sense where you have the infrastructure to serve such density. This development will be served by municipal water, municipal sewer, it's flat, it's undeveloped soils that don't need remediation. There's a good amount of internet providers in the area, there's gas in the area. So all of the utilities in the, set every other issue aside, just the fact that you have a flat piece of land with that many utilities right there is a positive for development.
Miles?
It's positive for sustainability.
Do you, do you have the screen or does?
Taylor's gonna have it.
I have it.
Okay, I was just wondering if, there's a little bit of confusion of exactly where it's at. If you could show it in fetch, that would be great. Can you, can you?
I don't use fetch often.
Oh, okay.
It's just, when you, I'll try to talk you through it, so.
No, I, I know where it's at, you remember?
Yeah, but just in case anybody doesn't know, that's watching the video. If you just go on Webster Road, you would be going south, you would make it right onto Anne Drive, follow that around the curve, and you make a left onto Gary Lane. It's kind of at the end of Gary Lane.
Right.
Even if you drive out to Gary Lane today, you'll see an area where it's stubbed for a road. That's where this would be served by.
What's the average parcel size?
There are smaller parcels in the bad township context. In the, let's say if this was to be in the city of Lansing, these would be large parcels. But I would say about twelve thousand square feet, twelve thousand four. But I would say about twelve thousand square feet, twelve thousand, fourteen thousand square feet, somewhere in there. So the ones around the bends obviously have a smaller square footage, the ones in the middle have a larger square footage. So the ones around the bend have a square footage of like ten thousand square feet, those ones in the middle have a square footage of like fifteen thousand square feet.
I don't see a page number in there.
And what is the estimated price of the houses that they'll put out?
The for these houses and again, the housing market has been a sector where prices are rapidly developing, so people aren't following that market. I know sometimes what is now considered affordable, people just get sticker shock at. These are considered middle-class affordable units and it's going to be in the high, or at least the developers communicated that it'd be in the high three hundred thousand still below four hundred thousand. Which just for reference, um, the last P U D that was developed in that, and again, that one was in the Hazard School District. Was the Meadowbrook West that came through, those houses are now typically selling for the six hundred to seven hundred thousand range.
That's the one right.
Even smaller parcels in this.
That's the one right behind McDonald's.
The one right behind McDonald's, yes.
Well, I'm glad you told the middle class that these are affordable.
I'm the middle class, I'm just not beyond it.
The water that comes in, where's it coming in at?
So the like the city water that's coming in, the municipal water, it'll come right in there off of Gary Lane.
Is there water on Gary Lane now?
There is water that goes through there that services some of the homes on Anne Drive, I understand that a lot of people on Gary Lane don't have municipal water. It's because those wells were drilled prior to the municipal water coming through that area. And there is, unlike sewer, sewer you can require people to tap in, but if somebody's home is already serviced by a well, they don't have to tap in.
Well, that's interesting, I didn't know that.
I can tell you when I lived up here on Webster Road, we had our own well.
Right.
We never, I mean, I don't know if the, now the new one.
I can check into that for sure, Al, but I believe that's the basis, through the private portion of Anne Drive, but it's right there on the parcel. Like a water line clearly crosses this parcel.
And they have the capacity to cover these houses?
Yep.
Is that because of the new new line that was put in?
The new water line?
Yeah. Harvek Road, Webster?
I I don't believe so, I think that was a brilliant project.
I I thought there was a a main coming underneath sixty-nine from the south.
That is something that the Board of Water and what is looking at right now, but that's more so not to um increase their capacity to serve water. It's more to increase their resiliency if there's ever an issue. The capacity is there, resiliency is a concern.
He's a fire.
In case that one crossing goes down or just needs maintenance, they don't have to shut customers off for a period of time.
Redundancy.
Redundancy, exactly.
Yeah, I see most of those lots are a hundred by a hundred and twenty-five, those ones in the circle on the inside. Should look at it.
Is that a half acre?
Yeah. Yeah.
Moving from the same problems into the same problems?
Please, please let me know if we have any questions on this development. You know, we'll be anytime between now and next meeting, um, that I'm sure the developer won't want to be here of when this is on the agenda for action to answer any questions as well.
Yeah, and if you're going to work on the additional condition, that would be great.
And I think just pointing out one more time uh for you all that if you were to vote yes on the uh special use permit. But you don't approve the ordinance, this does not move forward.
Correct. I was for, I guess I should say I'm fortunate enough to have been on the planning commission when this all came about, so I know a little more than you do about it. Cause you left.
I didn't leave, I ascended.
Well, on that note, if there's no further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miles.
Thanks, Miles. That brings us to fourteen large A, small c, workers' compensation proposal from the superintendent.
Thank you, uh, as we went through our most recent uh workers' comp case, as the board was aware. There were some thoughts that the township should switch workers' comp carriers. I spoke with our liability insurance carrier, which is uh Jason Orton of the David Chapman Agency. And had him speak with myself and with the supervisor via Zoom. Because we have police and fire, um, not a lot of companies will take us as a municipality. There is one other uh accident fund, which the quote is listed here for you. Is one that we were not sure would consider us for a quote, but after forwarding our um lost run for the last few years. Which happened to be uh three hundred and three thousand dollars approximately. And nine comp claims uh between police, fire and other departments in the township. They came back and offered a quote that is approximately five thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars more than a current uh proposal from Meadowbrook out of Grand Rapids. Who is our current carrier. I would offer that there are two current open claims in the police department at this time and we would, if the board, um, this is here for you to determine if you would like to discuss. And eventually take action on switching character or uh carriers. I am told, uh, so was the supervisor from Jason Orton, that um our claims and the way they were handled were not unusual with uh Meadowbrook. And that if we were to, we were we were uh encouraged to look at other carriers, which was this accident fund, but that you would not ever want to be part of the state pool. Because you are not treated well as part of that pool. But this is the only other option at this time for us to change carriers when it comes to workers' compensation claims. And I am here to walk you through the scenario and answer any questions that you may have. And what I am interested in tonight is are you interested in moving this forward or are you happy to stay with the current carrier that we have? So that's a discussion for you all tonight and I'm here to aid you in this discussion.
Accident fund.
Yeah, what uh, you got somebody on comp now?
We have two cases that are currently open.
Okay, what happens to them if you change carriers?
Uh, I imagine they would see those claims through to the end, but we would have to have something in writing to them once we serve them with notice that we intended to move companies.
Okay, so they.
One is currently of a a very large uh claim that to my knowledge will be um complete very soon. The other one is a small one, so we would have to see if it was needed to be transferred or if it would be handled by the original company.
Okay.
Um, so you're telling us this is over five thousand dollars more than what we annually pay currently?
So currently the bill we have for um M M L is, yes, it is fifty-three hundred and sixty-five dollars less than uh the quote that is in front of you tonight. So it's forty-four thousand approximate.
What what and what insurance company is that through, the one in from Grand Rapids?
Meadowbrook.
Oh, that's the name of the insurance.
It's through the Michigan Municipal League, our our counterpart that represents cities and villages. And we pay a fee to be a a member of the M M L so that we can uh obtain that insurance.
And what is what is the fee?
I can't tell you off the top of my head.
The reason I ask is would that make up?
No.
The five thousand?
No, it's minimal.
Oh, okay.
I say minimal, it's probably less than two thousand dollars.
And um Accident Fund is a local company too, aren't they?
Correct.
Lansing born and raised, I believe.
I think part of the issue that we had with Meadowbrook was the extensive timeframe that they seemed to operate under to resolve. Claims that was very frustrating to all involved, except maybe Meadowbrook.
The only thing I can offer is that the the claim most recently settled was settled a year faster than the previous claim that we had.
Right, but in terms of multiples of years, I don't think that that, it doesn't benefit our employees who are going through that process.
So Jason Orton offered that, that is standard.
That is.
Uh, and that you will not see an improvement in that, that that is a standard amount of time for when you're settling the end of someone's career. It takes time and and to me it sounded like it was kind of standard for uh the level of uh career-ending injury. Or debilitating situation that you're dealing with.
I have another question, what what is the reason for us shopping around?
Uh, a couple of our board members have asked me to pursue other options and this is the only other option that we have.
We have that current claim that we've been dealing with as a board.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was thinking about too.
Generally.
My frustration in our conversation was like, this guy, his job is to sell us insurance and he's like, it's gonna be more expensive and you're not gonna get better results.
Correct.
Which I appreciated his directness and honesty about that.
This is a person from Accident Fund?
No.
No, it's a.
This is our liability insurance carrier.
Okay.
It's like a broker.
Yeah, David Chapman is, that's a broker kind of.
Yeah.
My insurance is through him.
But that, you know, we could switch to sort of make a statement that we're unhappy with the way things were, but there's no guarantee that this would be any better. Perhaps there's a guarantee that it actually would be the same.
Yeah.
It's really maddening.
How long has it been since our present insurer raised the rate to its present level?
Uh, we we pay more each year.
Every year?
Yes, and they do um audits, uh, we submit to self-audits, we submit payroll records to them, um, we increasingly pay more. We've not seen a a refund in many years, a lot of it is because police and fire uh depends on run volume and overtime. And there's a lot of overtime uh currently in the police department, so it it is based on what you pay your people. And that has been high over the last few years.
Well, you have your finger on the pulse, so do you have a recommendation for us to consider?
Um, there are rumblings in the universe that Accident Fund could be sold. I do not know, um, my previous partner works there currently, so I would probably declare some type of um disclosure in regards to that. I don't think it's a conflict because neither one of us benefit from uh the other one's employment. But I would of course uh voluntarily offer that as I have tonight. So I don't know if that means good things or bad things for the future. It's just another unsurety offered into the already complex uh complex nature of this. It, I did feel i- i- in in the way that the the supervisor felt like it was kind of maddening to hear you might not get better service. It was helpful for me to hear that. In fact, this occur, this was, there was, this didn't occur in a in a bad way. I know that it took time and I know that it was frustrating for people and for the people that are on it. But honestly, it was reassuring to hear that it, this is how it operates, um, and that they are not treating us poorly or or out of um character with the way other people are treated.
They are just treating everybody poorly, honestly, in the grand scheme, they're not treating us differently.
Correct.
But I I'm saddened that this is the standard.
Yeah, and it's regulated by the state, which doesn't help anything, but.
After Al and I start a new MERS, we'll start a new.
So uh um thinking out loud here, what, how many, how how, you you said, I heard the figure three million dollars, was that how much we've paid out?
Uh, no, the the claim, the loss, it's it's the lost run over the last couple of years was three hundred and three thousand dollars. So that is what they've paid to our employees for their care or for the loss in wages of our claims, which has been nine claims.
And that was over a period of how many years?
Three years.
Three years. Well, I guess, is it possible that a municipality such as ours could be self-insured?
You can't.
That I'm aware of.
No. I don't, I don't believe so.
I know private companies can, so I just, I didn't know if we could do that or not.
I think being a municipality of police and fire probably um negates any uh additional options that we might have.
If we go to a full-time fire department, is that gonna go up?
Possibly.
Because we've got more people working more hours.
More wages, more hours.
Well, yeah, I guess more employees.
Yeah.
Will be more funds.
And that's the highest risk you can get is police and fire.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of our our claims are smaller, um, they go, they cut their hand on a fence, they um, you know, are are injured in chasing somebody, they might hurt a knee or an ankle or something like that. So, I mean, those are things that um do result in claims frequently, so.
Sometimes in health insurance, I know that different groups, entities might pool together to, I mean, you get kind of strength in numbers, so to speak. When you have a larger pool, you can usually get a lower premium, is that something that is typically done in this type of case with maybe other surrounding municipalities? Like, for example, with our ambulance service that we just sort of solve the problem that way?
Yeah, I have.
That's why we're members of M M L, it's a pool.
Okay, so that is the pool.
That is the pool.
Yeah, that is a pool.
That is the pool, yeah. Most of um, most if not all of the local municipalities are with M M L.
Which automatically puts them into Meadowbrook?
It's my understanding that Meadowbrook represents all of us, correct. It it used to be something else, but it was sold and at some point in the last few years, um, I think before I became superintendent, it was another company called Brookside or Brookdale or something like that. But was sold to Meadowbrook, so it's, you know, those carriers change as well.
Do you see any benefits if we change to Accident Fund? I mean.
I mean, we'd be newer, they probably do additional things to um keep our business, but no, I honestly, I would uh predict that we would receive what we're receiving now and. I I I wouldn't foresee any huge benefit in switching, just to be honest with you.
That's a good no, I want to hear it, you're the one that deals with it, so.
Unfortunately, I just don't, um, it it doesn't sound promising, like we would switch to Accident Fund and we would be in a different, you know, situation, being treated much differently. It it it, to trustee Haggerman's point, it it is kind of m- mind-boggling, but it, you you are just one of, I mean, there's fourteen hundred in, you know. Townships in the in the state and we're just one of those, so even though we're one of the larger townships, um, it doesn't get us any benefits, to be honest with you, that I can see.
So what I hear you saying is that we should stay where we're at?
That is for discussion by all of you, but it is, it is my thought process that I I think that we are fine where we're at. I know that's not a resounding thing that you, a a resounding positive that you wanted to hear, but I I do think that that it, we're we're fine where we're at and I don't think we're gonna see any huge benefits if we switch.
Insurance is.
Awful.
Legal, legal extortion.
I would agree with you, and I don't know if you have any um thoughts on uh if working with different carriers, but certainly you would be welcome to join in this conversation.
Ben presented, it's pretty accurate with the clients that we work with and going through the M M L and their carriers probably gonna get the best discount. And all of the claims are probably gonna be processed in similar fashion. As frustrating as that may be in circumstances that are brought to the board, it's pretty similar to a car insurance claim that you'd make. Depending on who you switch to, it's still gonna be handled by them in in a manner in which insurance companies do.
Prima facie, we are getting a five thousand dollar discount if we don't switch, right?
Right.
I normally would not, um, a trustee had requested this and the supervisor had requested this, I normally don't move on the action of a minority of my board. You speak as one body, uh, and generally that's when I take action. But I did think it was worth the time for you to have the discussion and to look at the proposal, so I brought it here tonight for that reason. Because generally I don't take direction unless it's from the entirety of the board, so, but I did think it was valuable for you to see it, have the discussion, ask the questions and. Kind of either indicate you were interested in moving forward, if you wanted additional information, what could I bring you, or you've done the thing and now we're happy to stay where we're at.
Stay where we're at.
Ryan? What are your thoughts?
I'm mad.
Fearless leader.
I'm mad about all of this. Yeah, I mean, it just doesn't seem like it makes sense to switch. The only benefit I see is like making a statement to our public who were upset by this. But it's sort of a false statement by making it seem like something's gonna be better when they're actively telling us it's not. So I guess I would rather save the township residents money than pretend like we're gonna get better service than we're being told we're gonna get.
Yeah.
Where are you at, Kate?
Yeah, I kind of feel the same, I feel that it is very frustrating and. I feel for the people who worked for our township in whatever capacity, sometimes for.
in whatever capacity, sometimes for many years. Nobody wants to have to finish their career with an injury or a workman's comp claim and sit down with a bunch of lawyers and negotiate what value they thought they brought to the township in a dollar value. I think that that's unfortunate that adding to that tough situation, then we pile on years of time and thousands of dollars of legal fees, I would imagine, out of all of these claims. A whole bunch of that money goes to attorneys, I would assume. I guess I'm just also kind of mad that this is our only option, one way or another, that that is our only option.
I did take it as a win. We were told Accident Fund may not even consider us based on the loss history, and they actually did quote us, so that was a positive. But it was a possibility that they looked at us and said, no, thank you.
Yeah.
So, I know that's not much positivity to the conversation.
Well, I mean, of course, they want to take our money and not pay any claims. Like every insurance company.
Correct, that's correct.
And they also say it's not bindable, guys. Well, that's a quote, yeah, that's why.
Yeah.
Come on.
That's David Chapman words.
All right, does anyone feel strongly that we should move that conversation forward? Or have we done some due diligence just in the search?
Done, I think we're done.
Yeah.
Stay where we're at.
Kate, I see that look on your face.
We don't have a choice.
It's defeating.
It is defeating, I think.
Yeah.
That we can't be promised better, I feel your defeat. It's sad when we have to settle for what we're offered or given. So I do appreciate that thought and feeling from you.
Thank you.
It was worth the process, I think.
Yeah, so thank you for that.
Well, that brings us to the last item for introduction and discussion under new business D, 2026 budget process recommendation from the superintendent.
So last year, with the inaction of, or the creation of the, I guess resurrection of the finance committee, we took the budget process last year. After I introduced the budget and had an overview meeting with all of you, we took it back to the finance committee and made some very strategic decisions on reducing the budget to bring that back to you and have that introduced to you all before you held your public hearing. This year, I am proposing the same. There is an option here. You can choose to take this to the finance committee, which comprises of the supervisor, the clerk, and the treasurer, is often joined. Those meetings, I do not believe were joined by Rod Taylor or Lizzie. During those meetings, it was just the four of us. Or this board can choose to do that process here during our meetings, before our meetings and during special meetings, and do that work together here as a group, looking for some agreement as we move through some of those tougher choices. But I wanted to present the option to you again that you can either forward it to the finance committee or choose to do the work here as a group.
That's what we previously.
Last year, it went to the finance committee.
Oh, okay, I remember all those special meetings.
We held a lot of meetings, yep, and went through it line by line, page by page. But that work can also be done here. I know some of you believe that that's work the board should be doing. Others of you believe it's work that the finance committee should be doing. So it is yours for discussion and for decision. Doesn't have to have a decision tonight, but if there is a feeling one way or the other, we can certainly entertain that.
We still went through it as a full board together, too.
Correct, you did it in a much shorter timeframe. But you still were able to hear the details.
So I want folks to understand you'd still, all board members would still walk through it.
So I would still bring it to this board for like two, probably two meetings in November. You would have, after it was introduced on the first, I would have that overview meeting with you all to let you know where the major changes were from the year before. And then you would be kept in the loop as it moved through the finance committee. You would see it here for those two final meetings and then hold the public hearing and move to adapt it. So a good chunk of the work still occurs here, but the detail-oriented, line by line, page by page could take place at the finance committee.
So it was in 2023, was it, that you had special meetings that started at five?
Yes, over several months, I think there was a meeting every time there was a board meeting.
The reason I ask is for clarification is because I tried to attend all of those to learn more about the budget, you know, before I was even here, so.
Yeah.
Time slips away.
It does.
So.
My first one was in 19 for 20, so I've done several, and I've done it all different ways, and I can't tell you one's better than the other. I think all questions are good questions, and I think understanding the different funds and accounts is important for you all. But it's how deep you, do you all want to get into it?
Yeah.
Or do you want the finance committee to do the work?
I was happy with the process last year. Is the finance committee intending to make additional significant cuts? Or just sort of continue from last year? Or is that what you have to decide? It's usually what we decide.
I would offer that, based on the fact that strategic planning is not done, I would probably try to hold the line. There were significant cuts last year, we cut a couple million dollars. I would probably offer that we would do the same until the strategic planning process is done, and there's an area of focus for staff to really take a look at. So it might be another holding year, I would term it, where we're not doing a lot of extra special projects, only doing the bare necessities to get through until your plan is done.
Yeah, I would be happy with that.
Same.
So Ray, committee.
Anybody feel otherwise? Yeah?
I think it's, the board needs to know all of the numbers, not just the ones that are brought to us. And I think by setting through the whole thing, you learn a lot over the years. And I, it's awful easy to sit back and let you guys go ahead and do the hard work of it. But this way, you get to know the numbers and where stuff is at more than if you just let somebody else do it for you.
True. Ryan, you're on the finance committee. I guess, for lack of a better term, would you highlight like a line item that you're gonna significantly change, alter, increase, decrease?
We did that last year.
Yeah, so we could see that.
Well, what we did is, we changed it.
Because there was arrows up and down.
And then we made a recommendation to you all. But you had seen the original, and then you had seen the new recommendation. I think, Al, your motion last year was like, finance committee would go over it two meetings, and then the board would go over it two meetings. And I thought that framing actually worked really well. It sort of contained it, but ensured everyone got to be part of it at the same time.
And see the, see the numbers as they are. Good. Yeah, I just think, you know, that worked pretty well last year.
Are you looking for action? This is not up for action.
I'm hearing committee, I'm only hearing one person say the entire board should do it. So if I would, if that's the case, I would bring this back, and you would vote on it next time for it to move to the finance committee for that same two and two. But I think what I'm hearing is the committee should do it. I'm only hearing one person say that the board should do it. So that would be, my recommendation would be, I would bring this back for action at the next meeting for you to refer it to committee.
So we couldn't take action on it tonight?
I mean, it was here for introduction and discussion, so.
But it's the same old introduction, it's the same old thing, so.
I mean, I think what we saw last year was there were changes made at the finance committee and changes made at the board level.
I think there were, I do think there were good changes made.
To me, it felt like everyone got to weigh in, and I agree with Al, like digging into it is the only way to understand it.
Correct.
But at first, I didn't love the idea of them doing two meetings. I supported it, but it wasn't my favorite. But then afterward, I reflected, and I thought it actually worked really well.
All right, then.
All right, so you'll bring something back for us to.
So I'll bring it back to you at the next meeting.
That'll be August 18?
No, it'll be June, July 21st. Two weeks.
So that does bring us, speaking of meetings, to new business items for action A, cancellation of August 4th meeting.
Correct, so I did move this as one action. If you wanted to wait until the next meeting, I thought it would be more helpful if staff knew that it was canceled. And then we would have the opportunity, if you'd like to, to reschedule it. I don't think there's enough business at this time that it needs to be rescheduled. I think that you could cancel the meeting, and we could both have the July 21st meeting and then the second meeting in August. I don't think that you'll miss out on anything of significance with the timing of the meeting, so I would recommend that you cancel it. But I am always open to your thoughts.
I move to cancel the meeting, second.
Motion, second, is there any other discussion?
My only concern is, what if we get the contract back from U of M for Eaton?
Oh, for the.
That doesn't require board action. That is just, once that is approved by them, it will require the supervisor and the clerk to sign the agreement.
Because we took action, right?
Correct, we took the action. The only item that might have to wait would be if the police unions come back with a proposal that was coming to the board, but at that time, we could schedule a special meeting.
Okay.
I was just gonna say.
Your bottom two months, so.
Yeah, I mean.
All right, motion, second, any other discussion? Want to do a voice vote on this or roll call?
I think a voice vote's fine.
Yeah.
Sorry to.
Deputy clerk.
I know, I'm not the deputy clerk.
All right, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of canceling the August 4th, 2025 board meeting, say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you for that. Lightens the load on you guys, too.
Now we can make vacation plans.
Yeah.
All right, superintendent, we're at 15. For your report, do you have an additional report?
I do not, based on the project update tonight. If anybody has questions, though, I'm happy to answer them.
You reported pretty well all through the night.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. I try. I feel silly when I can't answer things, but.
Well, we all feel silly every once in a while.
All right, then we'll move to public statement two. Our public has thinned out. Again, this is limited to three minutes on any topic folks would like to address. Is there anybody in the public who'd like to address the board?
Senator Ray, Chairman of the Commissions. There seemed to be some confusion over the public road concept versus a pilot road. Clinton County Road Commission, for some reason, has never been willing to get off the fact that they want curb and gutter on their roads. So this adds an expense, not only to building the road, but for the township to maintain the road. And the new, environmental people seem to feel that green space, space next to the road is more environmentally friendly. So the developer has got to build the road to the same standard as far as the road surface and so forth, as the county requires, and six feet wider. And he's also gonna give us a green space beside the road and a space for a sidewalk in the easement in case the homeowners ever want sidewalk. So I think it's a win for everybody because it lowers the price point that the home is gonna have to be sold for, and it also is gonna mitigate future expense to the township to maintain the road. So I think you should consider that when you review the language that we want to change in the road ordinance and the plan of unit development. Thank you.
All right, we've exhausted our public. That brings us to board member comments. Sher, you want to start tonight?
Nothing to add.
Great. Good meeting, Miles and Karen. They encouraged us, I appreciate that, and educated us, so that was good.
Congratulations to Lieutenant Chris Hamilton again for his promotion.
Big thank you to Taylor as well for being our tech behind the scenes, our stage manager. Was helpful to use the screen today, and thanks for the folks that came.
All I want to say is that I said at last meeting, and I'll say it in this meeting, this wall out here with the sidewalk looks fantastic. The people that did the planning on that, I gotta give them kudos, because it is wonderful.
We should have sold brick sponsorship. Bath Fest or something. Kate?
I'll just echo the sentiments that I'm really pleased with the Rubs-A-Roe project and the sidewalks, and I think everything looks really great. And I'm seeing people using the sidewalks all the time, every time I drive by. I think it's just a testament to how needed they were in our community. And I really hope everybody appreciates all of the work that went into getting us to this point in time and keep their complaints to themselves. And also, congratulations to Lieutenant Hamilton.
I did drive down here this morning on my way to work and ended up being late because things were closed down. And I was like, who voted for this? And I remembered, it was me! All right, well, if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye, any opposed?